This is the Town Board Work Session Meeting for Wednesday, March 28th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. The call to order, it looks like all Town Board members are present. Approval of minutes for February 28th, 2018. Get a move from Mr. Quinn.
Second.
From Mrs. Metzler. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Prove. Monthly reports. Doesn't look like we have any monthly reports for tonight. We'll move on to, and there's no public hearings. We did that last week, so we'll move on to guests. Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. With us this evening, we have Larry Chen. Larry is the son of Ming Chen. Larry's dad would like to open up a restaurant over at 2150 Fairport-Dimeal Point Road. You know that building, it's the one you approved recently. It has Moe's in it, and the AT&amp;T store in the middle section. Was it one time going to be a Harazoo, and is it longer intended to do that? In talking to Larry's dad, mom and dad, they own the China Chef Restaurant over in Webster, and I think I sent you some information next to Pore Eddie's, the area over there. And just to give you some background real quickly, then we'll let Larry do some speaking for you. Mr. Chen would like to open up the restaurant. There's no drive-through. There is seating for 30, and I think a lot of his business is really takeout business according to his wife. And I'm gonna let you talk a little bit about the restaurant, what they like to do, and the type of restaurant.
Sure, sure. So, the type of restaurant they like to open is not another Chinese restaurant. So, I don't know if anyone's familiar with a restaurant called The Soup Spoon on Mount Hope by the University of Rochester. So, that restaurant shut down recently, and their chef was pretty good friends with me. I had taken sign in business school, so I know him personally, and I've really enjoyed the food there, which a lot of the other Med Center students did as well. And I figured that, The Soup Spoon used to be in Victor, and we kind of got to talking a little bit, and we figured that this would be a really nice location to be able to bring back the same type of restaurant, the same type of offerings to the community. It's gonna be a Cambodian restaurant, that's the theme of it. It's, I think he mentioned that, about 30 seats in terms of seating. I think maybe no more than three to five employees at a time, depending on businesses. There's enough parking in the property for about 50 cars. We actually own the property ourselves, and it seems like both Moe's and AT&amp;T in the surrounding region, all the restaurants do pretty well. So, we think that it would be a pretty good addition to the area.
And so, the reason I brought Larry in this evening is because, obviously, we've had some discussions over the last year or so regarding other restaurants in that area, and I know there was a concern for a restaurant that came in with a drive-through window, that type of thing, causing potential conflicts in the parking area and driving lanes. But there is no drive-through window in this case. And, you know, my intent was to have him talk to you this evening, and for you to make a determination as to whether you feel it's appropriate to pursue an application. There's no application before you at this time, but whether or not you feel it's appropriate to pursue an application for this site before they spend a lot of time and energy, you know, going through what they'd have to go through for the application. So, my intent is really to get some input back from you as to whether or not we should pursue it. If you feel it's appropriate, then I would assist them with the application. If not, then we will move on until we find something else.
Larry, see, you mentioned it was gonna be a, it wasn't gonna be a Chinese restaurant?
No, it's not.
Okay, something different. Is it gonna be The Soup Spoon?
Yeah, it'll be The Soup Spoon. It might not be called the same. We haven't come up with a name for it right at this time.
So, what kind of theme, what kind of flair? You know, I walk into the restaurant, what will I experience?
So, it's going to be, the design would be kind of like a contemporary style. Similar to, I don't know if you've been to the one on Mount Hope, but not probably not.
Is this where you pick your noodle out?
Yeah, yeah, that's the one.
Add to the noodles?
Apparently, Paul.
I'm just trying to, you know.
She's working it.
My recollection is just coming back.
Yeah, yeah, that's the exact restaurant. So, it'll be kind of like a contemporary style. Kind of like a fusion. It'll be like a fusion food offering, basically, is what it's gonna taste like.
Did you say that you own the property?
Yeah, we own the property at 2150.
You do? Well, I didn't realize that. So, Moe's and AT&amp;T are your tenants?
Yeah, they're our tenants, correct.
Wow.
Well, I knew that they sold the property, I just didn't know they sold it. Okay, and he never told me that.
He's a smart son of a...
I mean, I'm not sure. It probably just didn't really come to him.
Just to come up with an issue, he just gave me the impression he was leasing the land. I didn't realize he owned the land.
Yeah, I mean, so we're really, we're pretty familiar in terms of like the area. We're really close, and we live in Webster, and we always drive down that road, pretty much every day.
Should this be an addition to the restaurant in Webster?
No, it won't be. So, my parents are actually thinking of kind of selling that restaurant and focusing more time on this project. Because they've been there for, I think it's like 20 years now they've been in the restaurant business in Webster, and I think they're looking to kind of get away from it because it's, nah, Chinese restaurant is what they've done their whole lives, and they kind of wanna do something a little bit different.
If I recall, this would be less, it's less of a takeout, it's more of a, almost cafeteria style.
Actually, it's kind of like, it'll be a combination of like takeout and dine-in. I mean, it's not a large spot. It's about 1,400 square feet. So, we're probably going to be, I don't even think we'll be able to fit 30 people, to be honest. I think it'll be between 15 and 20.
Is it like the same amount? I'm thinking about Moe's.
Oh, no, Moe's is almost twice as big.
Okay.
Twice as big. Moe's is 2750 square feet, we're 1,400. A little bit.
So, are they looking to get away from delivery and that type of?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that is primarily their goal, delivery.
Because I was wondering if they were contemplating delivery out of that?
We're considering it, but The Soup Spoon on Mount Hope didn't have delivery, and it could work. I actually, I started my own website as well, in terms of on-demand delivery service, and we actually...
With you?
Yeah, I did. For the college community, University of Rochester, and the surrounding areas. And The Soup Spoon sold pretty well in terms of deliveries. They were probably our second best seller, so.
Well, I have no problem moving forward with an application.
I can show you a little guess, I'll tell you.
So, if everybody's comfortable, I'll sit down with Mr. and Mrs. Chen, and we'll start working on the application for you. I'm anticipating right now that the soonest we can get them in for a public hearing will be May 2nd, just because of the advertising requirements. There's nothing in between now and then that we can get them in sooner, so we'd have to...
That also gives them some time to prepare for any type of public presentation.
Yeah, that's a good point. So, if you want to talk to your mom and dad, unless you want to help do it too, but I can help with your mom and dad getting everything done.
Yeah, definitely. I'll probably be in contact with you.
Yeah, you know, have them give me a call, and I'll set up a timing lead with them, and we'll do the application and everything, and get you started.
Sure, sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we proceed with having an application submitted and reviewed by us for a potential restaurant at that location.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Proceed ahead. All right. All right, thank you. Moving to item, the second item here. Bid results for pump station renovation at Empire Number One and Empire Number Two Pump Stations. Eric, floor is yours.
Thank you. So, this was in back in January. It's kind of been a long time coming. We've been, you know, looking into this over the past two, two and a half years, especially with the South Plinko apartments, in the addition of the third pump station that we've coincidentally named Empire Three.
Be very creative.
New and innovative. In an effort to keep everything flowing up the hill and kind of increase the efficiency, we've looked at the potential for renovations at both of the stations down the hill as they're kind of ending their, or nearing the end of their useful life. With that, we've put a bid together. We did receive the bid results, and we somewhat separated it as for Empire One and Empire Two, with the idea that ultimately the contractor would do both. So, as you'll see, CP Ward, you know, and Villager both bid on it. CP Ward's numbers was significantly lower. Both contractors, in the pre-bid meeting, to be able to ask any questions and make sure that they, you know, fully understood of the scope of work, and what was expected of them, and feel comfortable kind of with their numbers.
All right, so I have two questions for you. One was the total cost of 94,900 within our engineers' estimates of what we thought the cost would be?
Yes.
Okay. And is this budgeted for in the current 2018 budget?
We were planning on doing it this year, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
I guess my only question is the scope of work seems to be considerably different between the two pump stations.
Correct.
So, what is, is Empire One newer, or has been replaced or renovated more recently, or is it just the cost of the pump is around that, and then Empire Two requires that much more work?
We're actually providing, buying the equipment separate and providing it to the contractors. We're able to buy it at a reduced cost.
Okay.
And ultimately save some money doing that. The Empire One station, as you may see throughout town, is more of just one of the plain green huts. All it needs is the old pumps pulled out and brand-new pumps put in to, you know, replace them. The Empire Two station, given that it's the actual brick building, right next to the, what used to be all that jazz, and now K2 Brewery.
Down at the bottom of the hill.
They need to gut everything out of that building, put in all-new controllers, all-new pumps, all-new motors, pull everything that is in there out, which includes quite a bit more work, as well as installing a backup generator on the backside of the building and doing the appropriate natural gas program.
All right, makes sense.
Temporary bypass pipe pumping, construction, everything else is in it.
Yep. The contractor will be responsible to maintain flows, so that it's never shut down, should not have any issues.
Yeah, and you've got two responsible bidders with CP Ward and Villager. They know what they're doing. I'm good with moving this forward.
I'd second.
If you are, Mr. Supervisor.
I am. CP Ward, correct?
Yes.
I'll second that.
So, moved and seconded to move forward, further discussions. Just want to follow up, and we started reviewing this in 2017, and looking at a number of different options and things like that, and as we kind of narrowed down the scope and taking a look at, do we bid this for equipment? Bid this for equipment and install? And as Eric mentioned, we were able to leverage our pricing to get more favorable rates to buy the equipment, and then just bid out the actual service itself. So, it was a two, kind of a two-prong. We did, in fact, pass a resolution to authorize the purchase of the equipment, which has actually been happening, and actually some of it has been delivered up to this point, and then this was the actual installation of. So, I've been moving, seconding the pool. Any further discussion? Those in favor, aye. All right, Eric, you'll get a resolution in for tomorrow, for next Wednesday. Okay? Great, thank you. All right, we've got Mr. Amish and Tommaso, we've got the Watersong Sidewalk Waiver Request, and that was a holdover. That was a holdover that we had, and we have the better-looking, we don't have the young John tonight, we have the better-looking representative of the family. So, I think it was back, memory serves me, on the 28th. We were taking a look at this initially, asked to have it held over, and they've identified, I think everybody's got a new copy of the map now. They were looking to go through, finish out on Five Mile Line Road, put things on the inside. We talked about the stub here, I think Mark or PRC, I shouldn't pick on Mark, PRC recommended...
Yeah, the blue highlight is kind of my scratching from the last discussion.
And then I think right here, there was a return that was looked to put in at that location. At least that's what my note so indicated. Because I think there was, is there sidewalk in that one first house?
Yeah, some existing sidewalks that are out there. This is John Mika with us tonight. There are sidewalks on both sides for the first portion of the development, which includes the lot on the north end, so we were showing if the board was to grant the waiver. PRC's recommendation was obviously there'd need to be, you know, a stub back to the edge of the gutter, and then a stub on the other side to get people across. You don't just kind of walk into a sidewalk and then, you know, end up in somebody's lawn. Similarly, kind of down at this, it's the east end, but the bottom of the map. And then we showed, kind of mind-scratching, the double connection to Mayor's Farms, which is to the south, which has both-side sidewalk through it. So, it was consistency to bring it up to Watersong and then to continue that out. So, the black line is, was their proposal. They're showing compliance with sidewalks along Five Mile Line. They're asking for a waiver to not have it on both sides of Watersong Trail through Sections 5 and 3B, but to do it on the inside loop of that development.
What about the stub? What about your?
That's PRC's, excuse me, PRC's proposal. If the board is okay with the waiver, we basically modified his sketch to say we'd like to see these ends stubbed back to the sidewalk and the gutter, and then at least continue down that last piece of Mayor's Farm there, just so it kind of blended together.
Did they see this?
Well, when we do that, I should have put that in there, because I knew that they just can't stop in the middle of somebody's lawn. It's obviously...
And I mean, I think we talked with Tommaso last time, and I think he was agreeable to that.
I think the other thing too, and I made mention, was that someone talked about consistency of look. With things of changing too, trees that we have to put on each lot in the subdivision now are not going to be between the sidewalk and the curb. They're going to be behind the sidewalk. So, that being said, I think it's less noticeable if the trees are not the same as you go down the street, because they're not eyeing it up with the sidewalk now. It'll be, you know what I'm saying? So, I think it may look better for us under those circumstances, if you will. So, the other thing too is inconsistency too. We've got different lights going in now going down the street, because now they're using LED instead of high-pressure sodium, and there's no glass on them, so things are changing. That part I really don't like, because now you go halfway down the street, and then the poles change, and the light heads change. You know what I'm saying? So, but it seems like as I'm on the site, working, people are walking, there's dogs, a lot of people have dogs, and I know what they're doing. They're trying to be really nice. If they go on the sidewalk, then if they go to the bathroom, the dogs are closer to their house, and then they gotta go in the middle of the lawn and pick it up. But if they're in the street, walking, and that's why they are walking in the street, is because this way it's not too far into their lawn. But there really isn't that many people using, they're using the street more than using the sidewalk, because of that.
I don't know what I would do. I walk my dog every day, but we don't have a sidewalk.
So, you walk on the road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't know. It's just, it's interesting. I never thought of it that way. But are you, is your group all good with?
Yeah, it's not a problem. It's common sense. You can't just end a sidewalk in the middle of someone's, well, it's actually town land, but yeah, you can't just end it. You gotta bring it back.
Gotta bring it back, right. Okay. Or lots?
I'm fine.
I'm fine with this too.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
I immediately approve what has been designed on this.
Yeah, plus...
Plus the PRC recommendation for the extension to the Mayor Farm sidewalks.
And granting of the waiver request.
You hear one? I see it. I know you're looking. Okay, so, move? Move? Is there a second?
A second.
Moving second, further discussion?
Aye, aye, oh, no.
Okay. So, this will be, we'll call vote, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, we have 4-1 vote. Okay. Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. And Andy, I think you announced the fact that Starbucks would be held item?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are we gonna hold it, or should we table it?
Well, yeah, so it'll be, we'll show it as, we'll table it, but it'll be a held item.
Is there a timeline of when we expect them to come back?
I thought they were coming this evening, and I did not know that Louis was in Florida.
I received, I spoke with Louis this afternoon, and he indicated he is out of town, and that they're actually working on, Starbucks is working on a new plan, a revised plan, I should say, consistent with some of the dialogue that we had at the last work session. 1280 Creek Street easement abandoned endments. Floor, Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. We pointed up the map showing 1280 Creek Street is the future, or Utopia, depending on it, next between Penn Web Park and Sovereign Drive. On that property, as it's been under review, we went back to the original easements that were filed in 1995. We have a sanitary sewer easement and a storm sewer easement. Basically, it's kind of the area that's the square area, I tried to highlight it before I made a copy and didn't come out too well. Unfortunately, when the things were filed with the county, the cover pages were swapped, so the storm sewer is on the sanitary sewer, and the sanitary sewer is on the storm sewer. So, tonight I'm asking for an abandonment just of those easements. We're working with the new owner that we will then refile those easements as part of it. So, it's surely...
It's housekeeping.
It's some housekeeping. We just need to clean up the easements. They're gonna remain the same in the location they are, they exist. It's just merely a, it's an opportunity with the new development just to do some housekeeping, clean up easements.
Can we blame Jim Costello for that error?
1995, let me see who's side.
I voted to blame Jim Costello.
We're granting of the...
I'll second that.
Okay, so, that will be the first action, and then at some point, you, through the planning board, will do the filing of the new easement, so that action will come back before this board. It's just right.
I'd like Mr. Costello to write an apology.
I know that.
All right, so, as we move, second of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? You know, for the carries. Sidewalk and drainage project review for 2018.
Three items coming back. As we've done, as we see almost every March, April of the year, we've come before the board and kind of talked about some of our projects. Talked about drainage projects we've got coming up, things we've got planned. Talked about sidewalks, we've got scheduled for the year, and then talked about our pond treatments that have kind of been ongoing. So, with that, as I say, I have a map for the public up on the screen behind me, but I gave everybody kind of a blow-up, you know, of the map in front of you. It's got many colors on it. It's kind of showing all of our different drainage areas. We have been mapping for the last many years all the streams that we clean, and try to track them by year, so we know where they are, what we've done, what we've accomplished with that. I may start with sidewalks first, just before we get into drainage, I'll talk about streams and ponds. Also indicated, this shows the sidewalks on here as well. It's kind of small and hard to see, but this relates to your chart. I'll kind of stand up here and point, but I figured it's kind of harder to see, or maybe closer to see. We have basically three sidewalk locations. They're carryovers from last year and previous. The first is Empire Boulevard down at the lower end. This is Little Sales Landing, bring it up through the canoe facility. We've looked at making a connection between Basil's, but the state DOT is working that area. We're doing repaving of the road, they're looking at some stormwater treatment for themselves. So, in coordination with them, we've decided to hold off on that midsection for now, see what they're doing. We're hopeful, and we actually have a meeting tomorrow with the state, they will be looking at replacement of that block's color, because it's kind of, the road is actually a bridge, if you'd call it, right next to Basil's and right next to the little pull-off area. If they replace that, then you could put sidewalks on it, and that would change kind of our design. So, we bagged that out. We do have CDPG money, that's community development block grant money from the county in support of these sidewalks. It does fall within that low-mod area, we talked about that a few weeks ago. That was last year's low-mod money, or CDPG money this year. We talked about doing some stuff down in the little pond area. So, that's first on your chart. Second on your chart is Empire Boulevard, so it shows the costs as well as the supplement with the grant money. The second is Atlantic Avenue. As we're working to close the gap between those two streets, this has kind of been an important connection to basically complete that block. Most recently, with the Windsor Ridge Development, they did sidewalks on Five Mile and Atlantic to the curve. We're coming the other way, slowly with the other development, they had brought it up to Maple Circle on Atlantic. So, it's a small little section going to Fernstone Lane, we'll put those neighbors bring them in, but it's one step closer to kind of closing that gap little by little.
So, it gets you to Five Mile Line to get up to Rockland?
Not yet, not yet, but yes, it will eventually. They did their piece there, we have a piece here. You know, that may be next year's piece, is to kind of, you know, chime in that gap. So, we're going a little bit at a time. And then the other piece we have on there is on 250, near the YMCA. There's a gap section between what was Hidden Hollow, I don't know, it's still called Hidden Hollow now, the Iron Horsemen, and then up to the YMCA with the traffic light. There's pet indicators at the traffic light now. We'd like to complete that section, get that gap filled in, and now, or you can get neighbors from Waylon Meadows, Country Club East, come across down at Waylon Road, come off the street, and then have a safe crossing, because there's not sidewalks on the west side of 250. From Waylon off, it's all on these sides, so that's kind of the last gap piece in there. That's kind of what we have proposed for this year. Honestly, we do have some, you know, budget constraints as always. We'll work with Eric and his team on repairs around town. We did quite a bit of repairs last year within sidewalk districts as well as using the sidewalk repair money, but I think also leveraging CDPG money towards it, also filling the gaps and doing those pieces.
Okay.
We already have, we're in the final process of getting permitting for Empire Boulevard. We already have permits, and we need permitting for Atlantic Avenue, and we're currently in process working on permitting with the state DOT on 250.
Okay. All right. Questions, board?
That sounds reasonable.
So, just a reminder, we got $10,000 for maintenance, now we got $40,000 for new sidewalks. So, that's 50K, and we got about $125K worth of...
And every year we try to show more than what we've gotten, you know, but we're just as much as we can, and we do as far as the money takes us, and we're gonna have more in the queue than to leave some money on the table. So, and as often you get held up a permitting on one, you can move ahead on another project or, you know, if there's a holdup, you know, we should propose more, we accomplish as much as we can, but if we do have a holdup, maybe we lose a whole season waiting for another section.
Okay. All right. Good. Questions, concerns, board?
No.
All right. Shifting gears, water runs downhill.
Kind of color-coded the rest, and it's, I know it's colors on top of colors. Some of the stuff we have, we're in the process of permitting. This is the Brayman property, which is in orange here. This is a section of the commission ditch that silt in over time. We've had that application in for a year now. Still waiting to hear back from the DEC on that. It has been a long process with that, but it is on our hopeful plan of, we'll get that permit this year, and that'll be a spot that we can clean that out, keep the commission ditch flowing. The other one that was submitted a while ago with this Bronston lower section, we were just in the area talking about the Cambodian restaurant right behind that. We have a pond back there, we've seen some erosion along the creek in there. We own a strip of property, as you had to go on the bend of Bronston, and the pond back up. up. I know Eric and his crew have identified there's some old ash trees in there, spots that need to be, trees need to be taken.
It's not on your sheet.
No, and these are the new ones. I'm kind of highlighting what's already in queue, we've talked about these before with the board, just kind of highlighting that, you know, these are in process from last year, still waiting on them. Just if people are watching at home or not, think that we forgot about them, we're not already in process. So it's not on the sheet, but just kind of stating, we talked about those last year, those are already going. This year, we've got Highledge, and now there's some erosion in that area. We've submitted and have the permits going already for that, just in anticipation to get stuff started. Courtshire Lane, we've had some erosion down by Willow Pond, so coming from behind wagons, 250, 441, you come down there, there's some erosion in there, there's some siltation depositing in there. So we're proposing to do some work in that area to help that, and maybe also help with the siltation that's going into Willow Pond. Kings Mill Court, on the north end of the wetland, we have Plank Five Mile Line. This is the Crown Point Development here, here's our regional plank road pond. We have some erosion through this section, so looking at doing so, there's some repair work going through that stream. The next one is Milford Crossing. Basically, it's on the backside of the Milford Crossing and even Newbury Park. Ponds here is draining these out in the back. This is coming out of the Thousand Acres Swamp. Atlantic Avenue, we've done some of the cleaning downstream in the past, we haven't gone upstream. There's two ponds in Newbury Park that discharge into this creek in the back, so we're looking at clearing the drainage way to make sure that those ponds function as they should. Penfield Center Road, we are up in here. So Eric's got some context about that, about poor drainage in this area, it's silted in. Start looking at getting those cleaned out there. Timberline Drive, this is the discharge from Beacon Hills, comes off Beacon Hills, runs down its backyards and ties in with the drainage that comes out of Glover Pond. We've cleaned this, Timberline on the west side, it comes out of Glover Pond, we've done work with Glover Pond. I don't think we've ever done a cleaning going east towards Beacon Hills. So that's kind of on our proposed list. Moving up with the Watership Committee, moving with them, they've been supportive of these locations. As you can see, we try to get different areas of town, you know, serving this kind of subdivision, but trying to keep up that hopefully we can have a regular recurrence of cleaning and keep that maintained. One item still in pink, Eric and his crew, we didn't need permits, we didn't dredge it, we're just out here out back, we had some blockages between us and the gun club. There's some trees that had fallen blocking the stream, which should cause some drainage issues upstream of that. So just, January, February, a little warm-up, Eric and his crew came in and did some cleaning in there, so hopefully that'll help with that. I think we may need to do some, maybe in 2019, do some cleaning, dredging upstream of that to clean these areas out.
So how far would you look to potentially go up with that, Mark?
I mean, there are wetlands. I mean, I think towards Mallory Lane, some drainage that comes out of Mallory Lane, kind of hit from a few houses that are there. They had some ponds in the last summer, the rains, and it comes under the road, kind of awkward crossing where it comes in and then takes a 90 under the roads, it's not the best flow characteristics. And first, we did the downstream channel here as it comes out. Hopefully that'll help with this flow there. And we can add some cleaning here. Going south, it gets to this wetland, so it'll only be a little bit to the south, up through the wetlands. We can't do a lot of cleaning in this stream, we can do some, you know, bring in a little specific item or tree that's within the downstream channel.
Got it, got it. And of course, not on here, but still a big project in front of us is Allen's Creek.
And Allen's Creek, because in pink is a future creek improvement. We've been working with Barton Judas as our consultant on that. Spoke to them just Wednesday. They're working with, coming up with three alternatives. They're routing it through Hepress, which is a stormwater modeling program, seeing what they would do with the storm flows. Once we see that come in, obviously, we'll give it to PRC and the town board. Once we're comfortable sharing that, we'll schedule some neighborhood meetings, have the neighbors come in and we can go to them and kind of talk about what are the options, what are some potentials down there, and then get into permitting and open design.
And when we get into that, I'm going to invite Supervisor Mailey and a member of his team to participate in those sessions because I think we're going to find that in probably all three, but at least maybe two of the three alternatives, Brighton needs to have some skin in the game, so.
And I think they've experienced some erosion in Corbett's Glen themselves in the power section we've had down in the park. They've had some known erosion, so, you know, they make some sense if we can get an access point near a central station area, they could work one way and we could work the other. Maybe some opportunities to work together, you know, the more cost savings with that.
And grant opportunities.
So that was the, kind of the stream cleaning portion. Any questions, thoughts, concerns? Obviously, we've run through Watership on that. Then also want to talk about our pond treatment piece. This is the third year of the pond treatments. We've done a pilot program with three ponds. We start down with Tollwood Pond, it's a kind of darker. We recently did a modification of the outfall structure. Been by, it used to be kind of a corrugated metal stand pipe that rotted out. We redesigned it to move it closer to the shore and do to maintain, easier to take care of, still modeled the same, still will function the same, function a little bit better, being closer to shore. So we're doing some pond treatment with that. Newbury Park Pond, Landbrook Pond, and I call it the harvest block pond, Brighton Park Pond, so those are the four ponds. Originally, when the group were working with ATIP, we asked them for a three-year hold on it, so this is year three. We've seen, we've used Watership, they made the recommendation to continue through year three, see what it is, see what outcome it is. Some of the stuff we're using is this muck away, that's an enzyme, basically it's a bacteria that goes in, hits the muck in the ponds, I mean, to see if it really does draw it down. Obviously, we've spent dollars in the past, dredging ponds and some other things, we're trying to see if there's other opportunities, whether more natural ways that this enzyme is chemical, it's a, it's a bacteria that goes in there that hits the silt, the muck in the bottom mechanics, if that can help to lower that level, extend the time we need to go, we need to go and dredge, and all ponds need maintenance, but if it's extended out or stayed off, so Watership's recommendation to kind of see it through year three and just confirm with the board this.
Sounds good.
Questions for Mark or Eric? Ask Eric how many times you've sworn in the ponds.
And let you tell us about your escapades.
Creek, not a pond.
Okay, so if we're comfortable, you know, certainly as Mark indicated, you know, he tries to keep the work ahead because we're in different stages for permitting, what work Eric can do and fit in with what I'll call the normal stuff, oil and stone, paving, you know, that type of stuff. So I always like to stay ahead. So if we're comfortable, this will be, this will kind of be the grouping that we'll pick and choose from this year as we move forward, if you're comfortable. And those that don't get done will just continue to be on our, you know, list for, you know, the next year.
They all take different times with permitting between Army Corps and DEC, so obviously, as the supervisor said, we try to get several out there and keep them moving ahead, and then obviously as weather permits, and then obviously we get proper permitting, maybe going to do these, some take longer than others, so they get on their way and we can continue to move ahead with other stuff.
I'll just say that a nice shout by you and your team, as well as Eric and his team, because I think this is probably, since I've been in this role, this is probably the best flow that we've had by way of projects ready to go tomorrow, so to speak. Those that are in the pipeline, those that even require more engineering and more details, and the way it's staggered, we're not, we're not at a point where we're out of work, which is, which is good. So I appreciate that effort on both of your guys' parts to keep that moving forward.
As well as the communication has been excellent as far as keeping track and operating or updating us.
Yeah. It's just helpful for us to know, and obviously we relied on, you know, many years of the DPW before and their memories and, you know, it was his matrician, we sat down with Dick Bendel and, you know, Dennis Anzoda and those guys, and many thanks to them for passing on their notes and information to get it on a chart, so, you know, nobody else's memory, but it's hard to remember which year you did what, and one to track it, it's two, it's good information for the residents to know we did it and, you know, we are tracking it and we are trying to get around everywhere to get on a more regular cycle. Have some logic to it.
Okay, great. So what I do is I'd, this one, while it's more information, I think what we should do is just at least acknowledge with a motion and a second, this is kind of the grouping, both from a sidewalk and from a drainage standpoint that we'll be looking at, that we at least support the grouping that you have, and then what ends up being done based on permits, et cetera, available dollars and what have you, but at least we memorialized it for you and your team, so, but for a motion to support the groupings as?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moving seconded. Further discussion? Again, I'll just echo Mark, communication's been excellent, so that what Paul said, I think it's been excellent, so thank you for that.
Can I just ask for a second motion on the ATIP piece? Just if I go a resolution moving ahead to a separate contractor?
Sure.
Or if it's included in the first one, just to clarify your concerns?
Okay. So the move by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mrs. Messler, that this is for the ATIP...
Who's Mrs. Call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Thank you.
And will we look to see that resolution on next meeting?
Yeah, put the resolution in for next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. All right, there being no further business, come before the board, the March 28th session stands adjourned at 8 o'clock even. Thank you to everyone, thank you to PCTV, and...